Well, welcome again, and at this time I will call the March 13th Board of Commissioners, Paulding County Work Session to order. And I'll see any elected officials with us this morning. We are extremely delighted to have Pastor Johnny Nix with us here from Pinkix Mill Baptist Church. Johnny, thanks for coming. Thank you for the wonderful tribute to Dr. Graham, one great soldier of the cross and great man of faith. Let's bow for prayer together. Dear Father, as we come to you in Jesus' name, we thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to pray and open an invocation for this wonderful group of people that lead our county. Dear Father, we pray for each of our commissioners, their families. We pray for all of our leaders and workers, all of our public servants within our county that serve our county so well. We pray for your watch care, safety in their lives. We pray that you keep them out of harm's way. Dear Father, we pray today that the decisions that are made on behalf of our county would reflect you and would honor you in every way. I pray, dear Father, that you would guard our hearts and lives, help us to be committed to you. Dear Father, help us to seek your face, turn from our wicked ways, and may we receive the healing for our land that we so desperately need. We ask it in Jesus' name and for his sake we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nix, thanks so much. I didn't say it's Pinkix Mill Baptist Church on Highway 92. Got a great congregation there. I'd like to ask the sign up sheet to bring it forward. And if you have any kind of device, phone or whatever, please silence that. At this time, I'd like to excuse one of our commissioners, Mr. Crowe, who has got a family need to attend to, and he just wanted to come in and hopefully be back maybe during the middle of this meeting. Gary Nixon.
Thank you, and I'll try to be back. My father-in-law was left this morning by way of ambulance. My wife is with him now at the hospital. I need to check on her and him, so I'm just asking y'all to excuse me and forgive me for it, okay?
Under minutes, the January 23rd, 2018 amended board meeting minutes and February 27th work session minutes along with the board meeting minutes are available for review. Under our positively Paulding statement this morning, we have a featured Academy Award winner, Mr. George Jones, to talk a little bit about the Highway 92 widening.
Hello, my name is George Jones. I'm the Transportation Director for Paulding County. I'd like to discuss the State Route 92 road widening project and recent commenced construction activities in Paulding County. This project will widen State Route 92 starting at Malone Road in Douglas County until north to Nebo Road in Paulding County. This project is funded and being managed by the Georgia Department of Transportation. The total project length is 6.90 miles, which includes three bridges. The Paulding County project length is 5.65 miles and the Douglas County project length is 122.8 miles. From Malone Road to Bill Crute Parkway, the project will widen existing State Route 92 from one lane in each direction to three lanes in each direction with a 20-foot to 24-foot raised median, including turn lanes and certain intersections. This section of road will design as a 55 mile per hour roadway. From Bill Crute Parkway to Nebo Road, the project will widen existing State Route 92 from one lane in each direction to two lanes in each direction with a 20-foot to 24-foot raised median, including turn lanes and certain intersections. This section of road will be designed as a 45 mile per hour roadway. Roundabouts are not included as part of the project. All existing traffic signals will be rebuilt as part of the project to accommodate the road widening. This section of State Route 92 is designed to accommodate an estimated average daily traffic volume of 33,000 vehicles per day in year 2039. The construction contract was awarded to C.W. Matthews Construction Company in an amount of $51,173,350. The construction lead date for this project was October 17th, 2017, and the current completion date is July 31st, 2017. Please keep in mind there will be lane closures on State Route 92 and side road closures at certain intersections through the course of the project. The Georgia Department of Transportation has worked to minimize the delays by not allowing lane closures through the peak hour time periods and minimizing road closures to a maximum of 10 days per location. With each side road closure, a signed D to R route will be in place to provide access. This is the first Georgia Department of Transportation road widening project in Paulding County since June 1995, so obviously we're very happy to get this project underway. This project will considerably improve the travel conditions on State Route 92 when completed.
Notice my dark one to far this. And Ms. Shepherd just told me that representing Graves was honorable mention in the Academy Awards. Scott told me not to try to be funny. It is. It is great to have Chief Pelfree and a lot of his white shirts in here in this room to discuss life-saving commendations of our Paulding County Fire Department and Metro Ambulance personnel.
So, thank you for having us today. My name's Steve Mapes. For those that don't know me, I've been with the county for 22 years. So, quick preamble. In case everybody in this room is not aware, firefighters, marshals, sheriffs, deputies, police officers, we're a little bit different. That was supposed to be mine.
It's early. We know your chief is. Continue on.
We go into untenable situations, and we don't want credit. We don't want to be recognized, but we're going to do that today anyway. But if you ask anybody in this room, law enforcement, fire, police, EMS, every single one of them would say, "I'm just doing my job." It's a privilege deserved, something like that. So, before I get started with our presentation, if you've watched the news today or last night, you saw Cobb County firefighter went to work yesterday morning and she didn't come home. She suffered a heart attack while at work, and her crew did everything they could to save her. She went to Kennistone and she was pronounced. So, Stacy Lee Bowler ended watch last night, 19 years of service to Cobb County. On October 5th, 2017, in Paulding County, we had a similar incident with a much better outcome. So, what happened was, we were dispatched to a tractor-trailer fire, a very large tractor-trailer fire carrying hazardous materials, flammable liquids. We sent a lot of trucks there. Our first unit on the scene confirmed that this was a flammable liquid fire, instructed Engine 1, the first truck, fire truck to arrive, to begin fire suppression activities. So, they went to work. Shortly after they started doing that, the crew was breaching the back of the truck, which was on fire, and the lieutenant on Engine 1 collapsed. His crew, I'll introduce you to in a minute, immediately recognized something was wrong, dragged him away from the fire, pulled his SCBA off, checked his pulse. He was in cardiac arrest. Immediately initiated lifesaving interventions. Got an AED, shocked him, got a profusing rhythm back, and for about the next 10 minutes while they were on the scene, continued to treat our lieutenant. Few minutes later, Metro Ambulance 802 arrived on the scene, loaded this gentleman up in the ambulance, and took him to Paulding TR about half a mile away. They spent an hour, hour and a half there, stabilized him, innovated him. He was on a ventilator. Another Metro ambulance crew, a critical care crew, came in and they transported him emergency to Kennistone Hospital where he was directly admitted to the critical care unit. He spent 11 days in a coma in critical care at Kennistone, and on the 11th day, he awoke. He spent two more days in a step-down unit, and on October 18th, 2017, he was discharged from home 14 days after he went into cardiac arrest on a fire scene. So, it's my honor to introduce my friend and colleague, Lieutenant Kevin Van Dyke, our survivor. On January 15th, he came back to work full-time on a truck with a little extra hardware in his chest, I think. So, we'd like to recognize the lifesavers who were there that night who took care of Kevin. So, I'm going to call Chief Pelfree, LeAnn Van Dyke, and Kevin Van Dyke up to the front, and I'm going to call out a few names. By the way, we're presenting the state of Georgia, the Paulding County Fire and Rescue Lifesaver Award. It's one of the highest awards that we can give. As I said earlier, we don't recognize each other, and we're embarrassed to be recognized, but we're doing it today because this was an extraordinary situation. In addition, the American Heart Association has provided commendation letters and certificates for saving a life as well. And it had not been for the quick action of all of these people, Lieutenant Van Dyke would not have been standing here tonight or this morning. So, please join me in welcoming Engine 1, Brandon Maple, to the front. On Truck 2, Lieutenant Brandon Kirksey. FAO Andy Dale. FAO and paramedic Brad Boland. On Engine 3, Lieutenant Scott Brown. FAO and paramedic Will Reiner. FAO Blandon Brandon Pluchau. Division Chief Kevin Martin, also a paramedic. Battalion Chief John Parker. Metro Ambulance 802 that transported Kevin to the hospital initially. Paramedic Griffin Morris and Lydia McIntyre. And last but not least, the critical care unit that volunteered to come in and take our Paulding guy to Kennistone. Chris Aldridge, Karen Robinson, and Michael Murphy.
Can we get two brothers?
In the front here.
Are you Paulding short?
Get the front. Great morning. Entertained by much ado, sure. We have no invited guests. All of your special guests are dead. Bill Award Number 1 is discussed action to award the replacement of ceiling tile within the Dallas Library Bridge to the low bidder, Hugh McMartin, in the amount of $63,132.78. This Paulding representative. Feel better?
I am, thank you. Good morning. This is a project that we are partnering with the state, so it's 50% funded by the state, 20% funded by the county, and it is to improve, make improvements to the Dallas Library. Specifically, this will replace all the ceiling tiles and recommend it more to the low bidder. We have three participants, and bids range from $63,000 and some change up to $72,000. Any questions?
This one else got a smile on her face. Thanks, Kevin. Bill Award Number 2, discussed action to award the school road over Dunaway Branch culvert replacement project to the low bidder, DC Hudson Contracting, in an amount of $86,259.09. Kevin, forward to him.
Sorry, I threw roast in the ceiling tiles. Again, this is a culvert replacement project on school road over Dunaway Creek Ranch. The existing pipes out there are rotten. They're failing and need to be replaced, and what we're proposing to do is install a aluminum culvert that will be put in this place. It's lightweight, they're easy to install. We have a 90-day completion date for notice to proceed on this contract, so if you're awarded. And the project cost of this is $86,000, $86,259.09. I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
I see on there you had the three bids.
Yes, sir.
And DC Hudson was the lowest bidder on this. If Houston before on the Lee Road Bridge project over Pecan Morph Green, we would like this worth very much. Are there other pipes that you're, that are starting to deteriorate? I guess they all deteriorate continually, right?
Yes, sir. There's quite a few pipes in this county that are in that shape we have. It seems like every other month at least a pipe that's an emergency repair job. You know, these metal pipes are coated with a, you know, like an asphalt bottom, and over time they rust out, you know, the water, the sand going through, erodes away the coating and the rest of them starts to, and so when the bottoms rust out, the strength is compromised, and at some point they're going to fail. Like to look at them catching them before they come to the failure point, but it's a lot of work, a lot of pain.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Okay, and the reports from committees and departments. Mrs. Dieter Holm, the Elections Regulatory Supervisor, is here to report, and I have his heavy wheels, the chairman, at board here also.
We also have Mr. Bobby Wheels, he was also Bobby Wheels. Bobby Lee, who is also one of our members. Sorry, I didn't mean to play you in case. That's a hard act to follow, actually, with those firefighters coming through, so. But I'll be very brief in this. I think that I have a picture here that I want to... Many of you know that we have been going through a process of consolidating our precincts, and a lot of people say, "Why in the world are you doing this?" Well, that's what I'm here for today. I also wanted to let you know that I did have an item under my business. I requested that to be removed this morning with very short notice. I went to Frank and asked him to remove that. There's some things that I need to revisit on those contracts. So, I apologize for short notice, but I wanted to let you know that that's why I had to do that. Our precincts are going down from 14 to 12, as you can see here. Here's a list of those. Shelton Elementary School, Burn Henry Park, Moses Middle School, West Ridge Church, Watson Government Complex, Bagstow Elementary, Paulding County High School, Iron High School, Taylor Farm Park, Austin Middle School, Nebo Elementary School, and Skoggins Middle School. Believe it or not, by cutting our precincts by two for Election Day, it does save this county a lot of money, and that's why we do this. I can't, you know, if I'm going to be tasked with being responsible for taxpayer dollars, I have to look at every aspect of this, and I cannot justify having precincts open that just a few hundred voters go to and pay the staff that we have to pay to go out on Election Day to do that. So, we always are looking at ways that we can save money, and this is one of them. When we did this, we based it on a few reasons. We went to the board, we talked to them, we looked at numbers, especially now that Paulding County is an early voting county. We have a lot of people that vote early. Over half of our voters vote early. So, that was one of the reasons that we decided to step back and look at this and make some We are going to be changing some of the early voting locations, and it's to benefit this county. If we're going to take away precincts, we're not going to just do that and not add something back to help the voters. We've had a lot of people in the community say, "I would vote if you would pick something that might be convenient for me," and that's what we have tried to do. I gave you a list of numbers that I want us to focus on because you will see in those numbers the number of people that are registered to vote. It looks like this, have it in front of you. The people that are registered to vote in those precincts, you look at the number that voted early compared to what they voted on Election Day, and you see that our numbers are astronomical for early voting. We voted over 43,000 people early in the 2016 election and only 19,000 on Election Day. Early voting's the way to go. That's, you know, when we look at this from a staffing issue, when there's a problem and you're voting during early voting, we can help you, but if you wait until Election Day and you don't know there's an issue, maybe you didn't transfer your registration here. Maybe you moved, maybe you've been purged because you haven't voted. We can't fix that on Election Day. So, we try to encourage people to vote early because if there is an issue, we can help them. It's important to us that everyone who's eligible to vote gets to vote. So, during this time period of early voting, we have 21 days, and if there is a problem, we can correct it and people get to vote that way. I also want to touch on the fact that I know that some people don't agree with us voting in churches, but we only have one church up here, and it is going to serve as an Election Day precinct, and it is also going to serve as an early voting location for one week. When we pick these polling locations, we're looking for three things. The most important is that it is handicapped accessible. Number two, we look at the parking. Parking is a premium when it comes to an Election Day precinct. Several years ago, some of you may remember it, we had so many to turn out to vote in the governor's election that they were parking on the side of Highway 92 to walk to the precinct. That was not good for me, and I have learned my lesson. So, when we have Election Day polling locations, we're going to have plenty of parking. I'm not going to have someone hurt on my launch. And 92, you all know that the Cross Road area is a very, very traveled road. So, when we're looking at these locations, we look at ADA accessibility, parking, and we look at space. If we're going to consolidate precincts, I'm going to send out more voting machines to be able to accommodate the voters because I don't like the voters of Paulding County to stand in line for any length of time. So, that's something that we talk about, we consider every aspect of it, and that's how we make our decisions. So, I'm hoping that you'll accept these precinct changes. We will be mailing out 104,000 precinct cards to every voter in this county within the next two weeks. I want to tell the public, the voters who don't receive the card within the next 30 days, contact our office. We want to know why you have not received a card. These cards will have your new precinct on them, they'll let you know where to go, the address of the precinct is on there, and it'll also give you a listing of who your elected officials are. So, there again, if you don't receive a card, contact our office. The last thing that I would like to talk about is kind of away from the precinct issue, but y'all know what we went through in 2016 with people talking about the voting equipment being hacked, that it was a vulnerable system, and I'm here to tell you that it is not. There is a new system on the horizon. We have met with our legislative delegation, and we don't see that being implemented until possibly 2022 or 2024. Our system we have is old. We've had the voting machines since 2003, and y'all know how technology changes by the day. But I want to let the voters, I want to let the commissioners, I want everyone to hear me when I say this. The voting machines we have cannot be hacked. They are never networked, they are never connected to the internet. There is a memory card in those voting machines that is taken out, sealed and locked, and brought to this office on Election Day for upload. We, there is no base and we can hack those machines. So, we will continue to use those machines until the state, excuse me, tells us otherwise. But voting in Paulding County is safe. I encourage anyone who wants to visit our office to come see our machines, to come watch the process. We'll start our LNA testing in the middle of April. The public can come see this process, but please, please rest assured and note that when you vote in Paulding County, your vote counts. Do any of y'all have questions, anything you want to say?
Could you highlight specifically which of these locations are the early voting locations?
Okay, up here of the voting precincts out of the 12. Watson Government Complex is always an early voting location. We are the only location that votes for 21 days prior to the election. And then, on the week prior to the election, we will open up others, and that's why I relieved the contracts because we are going to revisit some of those locations. But on this list here, you have Watson Government Complex and you have West Ridge Church, which will serve the week prior to the election and Election Day. So, there again, we're stepping back, revisiting those contracts, and I'll bring that back to you when we have additional information on those.
I'd just like to make a comment, I think. A few years ago, a couple of years ago, we talked about this too. I don't know when it changed, but we actually used to have 28 polling locations in Paulding County. If you ever tried to visit those in one day, it's pretty tough, but I know a few folks have done it. And, but with early voting coming on, it changed things so much because we got so many of the voters that were able to early vote, and so therefore those precincts went from 28, I think we went right down to 14.
Maybe that was in 2009.
And then, and so things have changed through the year, but it's because of the early voting. When you look at the early voting numbers, there's a lot of people that have that opportunity for whether it's a week or the three weeks to get out to those locations, and so therefore they've been able to decrease the voting locations on Voting Day, but give those locations more help. In the long run, it works out good for everybody, so thanks for your work. I know you guys are always looking at what you can do to make things better for the public, and I appreciate, appreciate you and your board.
Thank you. Anything else? I also want to add this. We've also seen a decrease since we have the sideline voting locations and the early voting and the paper absentee ballots. When we went into the presidential election of 2008, when early voting started, people were not really sure about it, and we had 4,000 paper ballots for that presidential election. That number has been cut in half, and that is a huge cost savings to the county because by the time we process an absentee ballot from the application... by the time you process an absentee ballot from the application process to receiving that voted ballot back in, you're looking at about three dollars and fifty cents per ballot. So, that's a cost savings. People now, you know, early voting's just a thing for them, and they, you know, they don't request those paper ballots anymore. So, that's another thing that we, we heavily looked at whenever we started this process. But if you need, you want to come down and look at the maps or have questions, just please contact me and let me know. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Great job. Public participation on agenda items. We're glad to have Mr. Mark Stevenson come forward and share with us on poll business item number one.
Commissioner. Chairman, I'm sorry. My name's Mark Stevenson. I'm here to discuss zoning action 2017-10-Z. I represent Rick Shaw, which is a landowner that has applied for this zoning. I also own a number of other development building companies adjacent to this piece of land where we develop and build. So, some of my comments today are kind of a little bit broader than the specific something that we're trying to attend. So, uh, yesterday, your, your senior staff was very gracious to meet with me, to kind of discuss some of the open zoning items. I have three steps that, uh, that I can't live with at the moment, and we'll go with those in detail in a few minutes. But I cha- I challenged, I challenged your staff, and by the way, Commissioner Crowe and Commissioner Powell were at that meeting and sat in and made some comments, just so everybody knows who was there. I am, I am, my, my comments today are meant to be very constructive, they're meant to be challenging, and they're meant to push Polan into looking at different ways of doing zoning and dealing with businesses. The process that we have, the zoning process, the process that we have now is not transparent, and it does a lot of things that discourages new zonings and makes it more difficult for people who zone to compete in the county. And I, and some of my comments are going in that direction. So, the first, the first, the first item is that when, when a, when a developer or someone comes and re-zones something in Polan County, um, it is impossible at the beginning, before you pay your five thousand dollar fee or three thousand dollar fee, to figure out how much it costs to build out the site. We literally have to apply for the zoning and wait till twenty-four hours before it's voted on to find out how much it's going to cost for our site to be, for our zoning to be done. That is not transparent, it's not fair, and it, and it, and it creates a huge amount of work for us trying to either negotiate with the county to undo it, or go back to our landowner or the people we're buying the land from and reset the whole deal. It's very disruptive. I would suggest the better way to do it is to, is to make all that stuff transparent upfront where we can, where, where we can much earlier learn what those costs are. My zoning came back with nineteen, nineteen stipulations that cost ten thousand five hundred dollars per lot, which is over two million dollars for my site. Now, my zoning was a little bit smaller in this case, so initially it was a nonstarter. We spent hours, months ago, working through those things and knocked it down, and, and we have, you know, staff has understood some of my concerns, and we did get it down to twenty-five hundred dollars per lot plus one item we had no idea what it cost still, and I'll go through those in a minute. So, um, in, in, in other counties, in other municipalities where I do zonings, we don't have to deal with this. We don't get jacked with thousand-dollar lot, lot fees at the, at the last minute. We know well, very early in the process, what we're doing with a solution to negotiate properly, and it makes it easier to finance our deals. So, um, did you have the, do you have the zoning steps in front of you? Did they give that to you?
It's in the back.
Okay, you got it, okay. So, um, I've got, I've got three specific zoning steps that I would, I would like you to consider changing. Again, I don't like the fact that there's nineteen zoning steps. I believe the reason there's nineteen zoning steps is because many of the ordinances in the county are outdated and old, so over the years, instead of fixing the ordinances, what has happened is the staff is adding zoning steps. They'll fix the ordinance, add a zoning step, that gets you through it. What you ought to do is go fix them, fix the ordinance, everybody can tell upfront what's going to happen, you can understand what the cost is. There ought to be three or four zoning steps because of very unique items on the site. I could live with most of the zoning steps, but there's three or four that are very onerous, and I just got to run, want to run them past you and go, go to that. So, the first, the first one I want to talk about is zoning step number ten. Uh, only, owner, developer agrees to submit a water and sewer plant at preliminary plat submittal, including an analysis of existing infrastructure improvements may be required. So, um, may I continue speaking? I didn't know I had a time limit. I need, I need about ten more minutes.
I need you, Mr. Stevenson, to say.
For making a motion.
Making a motion, Mr. Stevenson, continue.
Motion to continue, Mr. Stevenson.
And I will second your motion.
Thank you. And most of the second all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Crowe, welcome back. Is everything okay?
Yes, sir. Clarification, my wife does not carry a cell phone, so I appreciate that. She's smarter than most.
So, may I have one more minute? Okay, so zoning, so zoning, zoning step ten, uh, when, when a developer builds a site, it has to, it has to put in the infrastructure that's on its site. There is also sewer infrastructure between the site and the sewer plant, there is also water infrastructure between the site and sewer plant that has capacity limitations, and at some point, those, a lift station might hit capacity, or the sewer plant might hit capacity and be upgraded. What this step means is that nobody in the county keeps up with those capacity situations upfront, and we apply, hang on a second, let me finish. We, 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 we have to go and file a preliminary plat, and then the county can say, "Oh, this lift station needs a pump upgrade." Fifty thousand dollars if you want to keep going. Or, the, the sewer plant is going to run out of capacity, you can only pull fifty permits instead of two hundred permits. I needed to know that upfront. The county needs to know that upfront. I, I did a zoning in Woodstock about three months ago, a very complicated zoning, and I left the zoning with a letter of sewer capacity and water capacity that said, "If you build these lots within X number of months, the sewer system works." That is what Polan County needs to do. Now, in order to do that, you have to plan and know what all those upgrades are upfront and fix the, um, the tap fee where if it is not covering it, everybody pays it, so when everybody gets it, one developer is not getting stuck with, with, with this infrastructure, or they're not held up artificially because, because things have not been planned. It's, it's a very different way of doing business. This is the way it was done when things were going through the crash, but it is obsolete. I, I compliment the commission for wanting to do, you're done a war tour, and you're going to, you're going to change, you're going to put new zoning categories in, do not stop there. Fix the stuff and help us, help us understand our costs so that we can be competitive. Okay? So, I cannot live with that, I cannot live with a zoning step where I don't know what it costs. I can't. I, I need to know if there's off-site infrastructure costs, and nobody can tell me right now. All right? So, that's, that's my unknown one. Number two, um, step number nine, owner, developer agrees to participate in the Braswell Mountain Water Service improvements. That step is a little bit mysterious, but the county has told me that that means that my site needs to pay one thousand dollars per lot when I build a permit to help pay for this, this improvement. Now, the Braswell Mountain improvement was a water tower that was built many years ago. The water tower gives pressure to many of the homes in, in the Cedar Crest Corridor, so everybody in Seven Hills, everybody in Bentwater, there's thousands and thousands of homes that benefit from this, this upgrade. It's already been paid for, but instead of recouping the costs from everybody, you know, the, the, the water system customers aren't paying a piece, the, uh, the tap fees apparently aren't covering it, they've decided that only on new zonings will they charge this fee. So, there's very few, there's been three new zonings in the last five years, there's a few on the agenda, and there's, there's going to be more coming, you'll eventually pay for it, but it creates a massive competitive disadvantage. Literally, the builder next door that has a lot that has, doesn't have to be zoned can pay a thousand dollars less for their permit than I do. Now, you may not think that's a lot of money, but when you're building a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house and we, we count nails, it is a huge competitive disadvantage. I, I, I suggest that a better way to do it would be to simply raise the tap fee for everybody and have everybody pay the same fee. You can raise it a thousand dollars, I'm glad to pay it, but make my competitor pay it too where there's a level playing field. Secondly, on the Braswell Mountain, we did, we did, did an open records request and came up with the, the original report that suggested on how this is to do it. There's a whole multi-page recitation that, in fact, tap fees were going to be used to pay for the Braswell Mountain upgrade. Somewhere along the line, somebody changed the rule to, let's just charge the new zonings. Now, it's hard to go change tap fees, but again, we have an outdated system, let's go fix the system, create a budget the same so it can be competitive. I have a hundred competitors in my marketplace, and I'm going to compete against thousands and thousands of lots that do not have to go through zoning. You're already asking me to upgrade my zoning with larger lots, you want better facades on the house, and you really want me to pay another thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars per lot? Really? That's five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this site, and I'm not giving any extra lots. My zoning does not give me extra lots, I could just stay with R2. So, I have to pay five hundred and fifty thousand or I stay with R2, no change in lots. I get a better product if I go with PRD because I can match the other part of the neighborhood. So, again, I would, I, 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 I can't live with that. Uh, the third, the third one is the, is step number six, owner, developer agrees to enter a development agreement with Polan County to mitigate traffic concerns. Now, there's two pieces that it does, there's an onsite infrastructure piece that we're negotiating, and I'm in total agreement, we've got to figure out how to do it. That does not benefit anybody outside my site. So, we need to pay for that, and we need to negotiate whatever that agreement is and pay for it, we just haven't done it yet. Uh, the second piece of it is, there's an intersection, Seven Hills Boulevard and Nature Walk Parkway, which is an entrance of my subdivision that has been slated to have a red light. They want this site to pay about a hundred thousand dollars to fund that, in, in, that intersection upgrade. Well, the Seven Hills developer, that was waived, the Nature Walk developer, that was waived, there was no requirement to participate in that. Now, all of a sudden, we have, we have, and by the way, there's another parcel upfront where the county only charged twenty-five thousand dollars for participation on a hundred and seventy-two lot subdivision. Now, I got a two-hundred lot subdivision, and if you throw in a hundred thousand dollars on something that benefits everybody, to me, this is something that should have been planned, it should have worked in the building permit fees and tap fees or whatever the fees you want, and everybody should be charged fairly. So, I've got, I've got twenty-five hundred dollars per lot, which is five hundred and fifty thousand plus an unknown sewer cost that you can throw on me once I file my preliminary plat, and as of today, my site is not economically viable because of that. So, um, I don't want any breaks, I want to, I just want to be treated the same, and I think, I think the county would be better off if that, if that occurred. So, um, my request to you today is to do one or two things. If you want to get this over with, I'd love to finish it. I, I'd ask if you, you pass this with those three steps to leave it. However, I am in no hurry on this thing, I put this thing out a year and a half before I need the lots. Staff and the commissioners have indicated they may want to do more work on this and look at my comments and see if this is appropriate to make some adjustments to. I'm more than happy to do a table, and if you want to go that route, I would request you put it back on the agenda for the July meeting to give us a good time to go get through election, and good staff time to meet, and commissioners' time to really think this out a little bit more. It's up to you, I mean, you have other alternatives as well. I really appreciate the extra time, I think I'm thirty second under my extra ten minutes, so any questions or comments?
I have one. And I don't normally talk about this with a, but I do think it's disingenuous to say that this staff does not plan. I've been here twenty-one years, and all twenty-one of them, there have been stipulations on zonings. Many of these stipulations can be found in the Development Regulation Book, which, as you know, is a quite lengthy document, so there are ways to find the answers to what you're talking about. Also, the Braswell Mountain water fee has been on every zoning that I can recall in the last couple of years. So, that was certainly discoverable. And I'm sure the staff has things to say otherwise, but I don't think it's fair to the staff to say they do not plan.
May I ask, please?
Certainly.
So, so, um, I, 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 I don't believe there's going to be any argument in this room that Polan County is dozens of years behind in planning. I'm not saying you don't plan, there's, there are plan books all over this county, there's four or five multi-year plans, most of which are ten or twelve years behind in implementation. You don't plan, you don't, you don't think ahead, you don't communicate it to the developers.
And again, I think that's disingenuous.
You can call me disingenuous, it's a truth, and it's a fact, and everybody in the room knows it.
I don't know that. I don't know that.
And I think people disagree with you.
Okay, well, and then that's fine, that's fine.
And I think there's more respect to the staff than that.
This, the, uh, public participation isn't meant to be a public hearing, so appreciate your comments.
Okay.
This is for, so they deserve to respond, and, uh, but they did, but let's move on.
I will, I will say one thing. You, you can sit down. We've got a process, and to say things aren't transparent is not fair. There's a, there's a process where things go through planning and zoning, and there's all kind of, uh, there's a planning and zoning meeting, and they make their recommendation to send on to us, and there's all kind of work that goes into that. The process is transparent, and I, our staff, we count on our staff to look out for our county, look out for the citizens of the county. And there's actually things in the past, and I think you and I discussed this, there were things that have happened in the past that I don't agree with, I wasn't here and I don't agree with it, and sometimes when we allow things to happen, whether it's staff planning and zoning or Board of Commissioners, it's, it's last stop comes to the Board of Commissioners. Builders or developers or whoever else are allowed to do certain things, sometimes what happens is years down the road, somebody else has to pay for that. That homeowner doesn't know, people aren't aware, there's traffic congestion that have happened, um, there's school issues. But so many times, what happens is the, the Board of Commissioners, the government, backed by the taxpayers, end up fixing the problem. And there've been times in the past that I feel like things weren't looked at correctly, and, and we're dealing with some of those problems now. But to say things aren't transparent, um, there's, that's not correct. I, I sure don't want to bring elections into it, but I hope that whoever's sitting on this board today and in the future, years to come, will always look out for the best interested citizens of the county. the best interest of the citizens of the county, citizens that live in the county. Because we've gotta look out for them because at the end of the day, they're the ones that are gonna pick up the tab. And, uh, I know that the staff has given, has given you a lot of time. We spent a lot of time yesterday. We didn't agree on a lot of things. Um, but we have a process and that process can be gone through and, um, and there's a lot of time when you're in the planning and zoning meeting for people to speak on both sides. And, um, hopefully, we can work through this, but I expect our staff and I expect myself and I expect my fellow commissioners, our county attorney to look out for the citizens of this county, look out for the county as a whole. I may not always agree with what has to happen, but at the end of the day, I, I, I do not expect our staff or anybody else to make a decision for somebody that's gonna help that person out, that's gonna cost the taxpayers money years down the road and let's not know about it. So, we'll get on. I appreciate your comments. I appreciate the board allowing you to speak more than your five minutes. That's something that I have fought for up here to make sure that landowners and citizens in this community have the right to come to these meetings and be heard. That's, I, I think that has to happen. So, I, I do appreciate that. And sometimes we'll agree to disagree and we'll move on, but we will talk again. Thank you.
And just one concluding remark. The purpose of the moratoriums by the Board of Commissioners and the staff's, um, central research and contributions to that is to reevaluate and come up with solutions with a five oh vote.
Well, I won't chime in at that. I'm, I'm the one who moved this thing forward for the moratorium, uh, to which it looks like some stipulations. And I have spent a lot of hours with Mark yesterday. I hope y'all don't, this staff here, five of these are set here today for, we spent some time with Mark yesterday discussing this and we don't agree on everything. Um, our job up here is to protect the citizens, protect what's happening around the citizens, um, and understand what Mark Stegman's agenda is, is to sell houses, make a living, make money. But our interest is this county, how much money we'll make on a house. So, forgive us if we cross swords on that. I'm not gonna be caught settling a deal out for the purpose of building houses a certain way.
Okay, let's move on. A consent agenda. Discuss action on two consent agenda items. Number one is to appoint Matt Loew to fill the expired term of Chris Wheeler on the Planning and Zoning Commission and Representative Post One to determine ending December 31st, 2018. And number two, and everyone will be required to read all this, declared items listed as surplus and approved at disposal for an option of trade. The Sheriff's Department has truck unit S dash zero six, sorry, one zero six, 2004 Crown Vic, serial number two, ABFP 71W 7YX 129406. The five department has truck unit 543, a 2002 Ford Explorer, serial number one FMZU 72K 62UD 56883. And under the Parks and Recs Department, truck unit 152, it's 1995 Ford F-250, serial number of one FTHF 25 YXSN 884491. Would any of the commissioners like to move either of those two items to regular business? Here young, we'll leave them on the consent agenda and under old business, discuss action on 2017 dash 10 dash Zulu, application by Rickshaw Real Estate LLC to rezon approximately 50.57 acres from R2 suburban residential to PRD planned residential development for subdivision development in Seven Hills. Property is located in land lots 44, 45, 524, 525, 556, District 3, Section 3. North of Nature Walk Parkway, east of Williams Road, in Post 4. The recommendation was approval with a vote of 501 with 19 stipulations. It's tabled for December 12th, 2017, Board of Commissioners being. Pass that microphone down to Ms. Lutman. Any updates or comments in?
Um, this time, um, don't really have anything to add. Just, uh, the applicant presented, um, two options he seemed willing to entertain. And, um, Chris Robinson's here as well. If there's any questions, you have for him.
Or do they have any additional comments or considerations or questions?
I don't guess at this time. I'm good with the 19 stipulation.
Any other comments? Obvious number two is discuss action to approve 2017 dash 14 dash Zulu application by J&amp;A Construction and Home Builders to rezon approximately 71.38 acres from R2 suburban residential low density quality residential development district to build 150 residential homes. Property is 71.38 acres and size is located in land lots 616, 617, 618 and 619. In District 3, Section 3. It's on the east side of Cedar Crest Road, south of Cedar Crest Boulevard in Post 4. Uh, the recommendation, uh, planning commission was denial with a vote of 4.11 with 19 stipulations. This was tabled on January the 23rd, 2018, Board of Commissioners being. Further discussion on this, on business item number two?
It also had 19 stipulation.
Obvious number three is discuss action to adopt resolution 18 dash 10 confirming the executive session for the purpose of pending potential litigation from February 27th, 2018 at 7:00 PM, Board of Commissioners being.
And again, this is the resolution because we went into close session twice that day. So, you adopted the one for the morning and this is the one for the evening.
We had that in the backup materials, so no discussion needed. Under new business, discuss action to approve the chairman's nomination of James T. Trevor Hess, position of Chief Marshal. And it's, uh, quite an honor to have someone that's been among us for many years. Lieutenant Hess, uh, with the Santa Fe Trail High School. I never found out where, where is that? New Mexico or something?
That's where I was.
From, um, 1999 to 2013, Trevor was, uh, working for the Public County Sheriff's Office, detention center for several years, the patrol division, the crime suppression unit. Uh, and then 2013 through today, he has been with the Marshal Bureau, currently in charge of the day-to-day. He's been on patrol division there, the security division and, uh, Sergeant Patrol, Sergeant of the Patrol Unit. His certifications include a basic peace officer certification, field training officer certification as a radar operator and lidar operator. Uh, he's a instructor in, just a general instructor and then firearms instructor. I'm not gonna read all the advanced training that he's had, uh, but I would like to point out a couple of awards. In 2003, Lieutenant Hess received the Distinguished Service Medal at Paulding County in the Sheriff's Office. More recently, in 2012, he was awarded the Medal of Merit out of Paulding County Sheriff's Office. So, anybody else feel free to comment, but Lieutenant Hess has certainly shown his initiative and attitude toward, um, our code enforcement in the county. And, um, it's, it's gonna be great to be able to vote on him this afternoon. Are there comments?
I'd like to say that he is already on the job. I've discussed a thing with him. He's taking care of some matters. I'm back to asking Mr. Moore when I came in. I said, how do you get that done? And I'm like, I'll elaborate on what he said, but he's taking his job.
I appreciate the work he's doing, uh, the work that I've seen the department doing, working together as a team. So, thank you. Look forward to this afternoon's vote.
Yes.
And it's also, it's worth mentioning, I appreciate Frank and the work that you've done as interim chief marshal to, uh, to, to, to help in that area. And, um, glad you're here to be able to help in that way. Looking forward to, looking forward to the future.
But thanks also Frank for all your work on this. Do you wanna add some comments?
I appreciate it. Trevor has done an outstanding job, uh, for the last couple of months. He's really, uh, helped us get, uh, and moving forward. As, as y'all can recall, uh, just last meeting, we were here and had a change in the ordinance, which hadn't been done since the adoption of that ordinance, uh, 31 years ago. So, he's been involved in helping us with that and handling patrol and, and moving, uh, moving the business forward, uh, for this board and for the county. So, I think it's a very good recommendation. I support it 110%.
New business number two is discuss action to authorize the chairman enter to an agreement with Kelly Landscape Management Incorporated for the roadside right-of-way turf maintenance services contracting an amount of 176,087 dollars and 73 cents. The contract provided provides for finished mowing, string trimming, edging and litter pickup of approximately 65 acres, of which 2.5 that's the median, um, and also 54, 55.44 acres on the roadside shoulders on various county roads. Backup material had a list of all the county roads, which has increased over the last couple of years. Mr. Jones?
Hey, Chairman. Yes, this is, uh, you know, contract we've had. This will be our third year with Kelly Landscaping Services. Um, we had initial year and then we had an option of two more years provided both parties were agreeing with, uh, the order in the contract. We've been very happy with the work provided by Kelly. Um, the roads, the turf areas look very good. They clean up the litter every two weeks, so it, uh, it looks really nice. And unfortunately, there is a cost associated with this that we made, but, uh, it's something that, uh, we recommend. So, um, we do 17 cycles per year. It's mowing, edging, litter pickup. Goes through late March through the late October. Mind me, if I can answer any questions on this.
The only thing that I thought I'd been reading in the chair was, again, the growth of this program. And, uh, of course, I guess ideally, you'd have a hundred percent of your roads covered. As far as selection of the roads, typically, they've been projects that the DOT has worked on where we've done roadway and associated, um, landscaping for, um, you know, the size of the roads and meeting areas like that. So, you're right, this, this program has grown over the last three years and it will continue to grow in the future as we add roadway projects and construction projects.
Are there comments?
George Woodamont, nine when a couple areas of roads that that is for the public because I've had a couple of questions on it, but yeah, it is gonna continue to, to grow.
Certainly. Commissioner, you know, we have, uh, Mill Crew Parkway, obviously is the biggest area going from, you know, 278 and Jimmy Lee Smith all the way to 278 at Wendy Bagwell, Cedar Crest Road, Seven Hills Connector is another area that's pretty large. Uh, we have intersections at, uh, East Paulding, Dallas Airport, Nevo, Dallas, Nevo, areas like that.
All over the county.
Exactly. Wherever, wherever there's turf, we're on it.
Commissioner, number three here also discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign a quit cleaning deed to abandon a portion of the right-of-way of Old Obo Road. Any help on these, right?
Yeah, this is basically just a housekeeping item. This was brought to our attention by John Tripp, County Surveyor in the county. And, uh, he was doing some work for a citizen. Basically, the property owner at 324 Obo Road, they couldn't close their property because they couldn't get a clear title. So, this is a very small parcel. It's less than 2.01 acres, tiny. We don't have any legal way to actually access it. So, it's just something that, uh, it's good for them and it's good for us to get off of the boards.
Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you very much, George.
Thank you.
New business item number four is discuss action to adopt resolution 18 national level adopting of Paulding County branding concepts. For use in the community. And we have our public information manager, Jeff Markins with us. And he brought along, you know, he actually, uh, a school system employee, Mr. Bligh and Croft, who's helped us a bit with this project.
Morning.
Morning.
I will, uh, keep this as quick as possible. Basically, uh, what we wanna present to you today is a logo and slogan concept to come up to brand the county. Um, in a partnership with, uh, the Paulding County School District, we have the pleasure of working with Logan Croft, um, who actually created the new Paulding County School District's logo that they've recently changed. Um, and he basically took our concept and our vision and created a simple elegant logo that, um, won't replace our county seal, but, uh, will, uh, will try to show what sets us apart from other counties, uh, with our, highlighting our outdoor beauty and recreational advantages, our upcoming water independence and, um, showing the sun rising on a new day in Paulding County. Uh, with the slogan, Explore Unwind Thrive. Explore is, there's so many places to go out in the county and explore. Our parks, um, you know, the WMA if you'd like to, uh, the new breast park coming soon. Uh, there's plenty of areas shopping to, to explore in this county. Uh, unwind kinda speaks for itself, you know, you know, run on the trail, take a bike ride on the Silver Comet, go shopping, go eat at one of the many restaurants. And then thrive. This is, uh, economic development driven, you know. We have great healthcare. We have great schools. Um, we have great businesses here in Paulding County. So, we wanted to show that you can actually thrive living here in Paulding County. Uh, with this, we look forward to building a, a county marketing campaign behind this and, um, this will also be shown prominently on the new, um, paulding.gov web pre-assigned. So, with that said, y'all any questions?
I mean, it was good. I liked it.
I like it and I appreciate your work and your enthusiasm about it. That's what I, that's what I'm excited about the most. So, thank you for that. Take it in the lead.
Good work.
Close it.
Would you come in on other people that were on your team, please?
Absolutely. I, I meant to do that, but it was Angela and Rebecca and myself. We're with Logan. We all got together and it, it worked out great. Logan's amazing. He's really good. He can explain to you, you know, the colors we, we chose and, uh, you know, he took what we had in our minds and quickly, we were able to put it out there in a real simple and elegant. So, all credit goes to him. Really great.
Any comments, Logan?
No, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and to work on this. Everybody's a great team to work on it. It's been a thrill to be here.
Great. Appreciate your help and your creativity.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
New business item number five is discuss action to approve the May 1st, 2018 Employee Benefits Plan renewal. Mr. Brian Acker. Thank you, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to do the May renewal. I'd also like to recognize- I'd also like to recognize and introduce a couple of folks that helped us with our benefits from Jason Smith and Neer, Gary Jenkins, and David Easter. They're an integral part, they're behind the scenes employees for all practical matters. If it wasn't for them and their assistance, we wouldn't be able to put together this comprehensive package as we do. Also, want to thank y'all. I do this every year. I don't say this to be patronizing. We have had, established and maintain a position with our employee benefits to be competitive, comprehensive, yet keep it cost-effective, not only to the employees, but to the citizens. And that's quite an objective, and it's also quite a challenge. And we have done that continuously through the years. I appreciate y'all's support and help for that. It means a great deal to my staff as well as the employees. I have outlined in your backup material and have discussed with you the proposed benefits of renewal. Some good positive takeaways, we don't have any increases or changes in our life insurance costs, our disability costs, our dental plan. We had those locked down for a couple of years. But one of the key things that I've discussed with you is we do have increases to the medical plan. We started off with a renewal, just based on underwriting formulas, which really just get to your claims history, of over 2.2 million. The renewal that was actually presented by Blue Cross was 14.7%, or about 1.8 million. And after negotiations, that's down to approximately 1.6 million. Talk to y'all, we cannot get around claims. We certainly have had a tough claims year, just to share a couple of things with you. When we talk about claims, what I'm saying is premiums paid relative to claims paid. A couple of tough months, and this is what we have the insurance for, so I don't want to make it a negative issue, but the fact of the matter is, for the last 21 months, we've paid in for every, the claims have been, or have been 93% of all money we have paid in. We have had once in the last year, one month, we had 138%. For every hundred dollars we've paid in, they've paid 138 out of the claims. Another month, that was 121%, another 131%. It's hard to get around that, but that is part of what this is all about, is to take care of the welfare of our employees and their families. Over a 13-year period, I want to try to lighten this up a little bit, this is what I am proud of, and I think we're appreciative of, our average over a 13-year period, yeah, this is tough here, but over 13 years is about 4.4%. And if I could come before you today and say I can give you a health insurance plan that you will have a 4.4% renewal for the next 13 years, I would be strongly, strongly suggesting you take it. That's extremely difficult to come by, but those folks are seeing double-digit increases every single year, year after year. Health inflation rate alone is about 17.5%. And if you want to see that as your renewal, you have to have about 80 to 85% of loss ratio on your premiums to claims paid. So again, over 21-month period, we have about 93%. You understand where some of that increase comes from? There are a couple of other positive takeaways I'd like to share with you. One of the cost-saving moves we took several years ago was to implement the HRA plans. We have three protective plans. We are seeing a migration towards those, those are more cost-effective plans. Employees who have continued to stay in the point-of-service plan, we do ask that they pay more towards the premium. It's a higher-cost plan, but they do pay more if that's their decision for them and their family. Other things, if we, if the renewal is approved, I want you to also be aware that, yeah, we absolutely do share with the employees what this cost-sharing arrangement is. We don't casually just pass out a piece of paper and let them know it's time to sign up for the benefits for the next year. We share with them the cost-sharing arrangement, we let them know how much the commission is paying for it. We also, in turn, as if they be good consumers, we want them to understand the mechanics of their plan. We want them to thoroughly understand that, we want them to understand how they can save themselves dollars and be good consumers. That all packaged together is what helps us keep our rates down. It is a difficult challenge, as I mentioned, but that's where we're at this year. Certainly be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
You brought up one, I finally got an opportunity to sit down and read over this. You or maybe someone from Jason Smith and Neer, can you explain a little bit more to me the PCOR and IP?
I would love to learn about that.
This was a fee that was mandated.
Am I coming up here, David? This is related to the Affordable Care Act, and as David comes up.
I ran over that, I think it's something everybody needs to know.
I think it's a good point to share. Over almost $500,000 in insurer fees related to the Affordable Care Act, and David is going to be able to explain. Corey fees much better than me.
Let him do so. It's a very small fee that came about due to the Affordable Care Act, healthcare reform. It's projected to be on average, less than $1,000 total for the county, but it is something the county has to pay, again, due to the Affordable Care Act, and it stands for the Patient Center Outcome Research Institute, which is just kind of a big acronym, if you will, for, the fee gets paid to sort of investigate what can we do to improve healthcare, how can we better coordinate with our hospitals, doctors, foster assistance, things of that nature.
Who receives that?
It's sent to the IRS, and IRS then gives it up to, you know, the committees that are working on that research.
And you want to say you write a check for that?
The county does have to pay that under the law, and it's something that they write a check directly to the IRS.
Any other questions? I'd just like to comment. Brian called me earlier this week, told me talked about this, and we've had that conversation since I've been in office every year it comes up, and I just want to say thank you, Brian, for the work that you put. This is a big number, increasingly big, but they're smaller than they would have been. Thanks, just in negotiation, the hard work there by you and your staff. So we do appreciate that, your efforts to help keep that number as reasonable as possible. Thank you there. Appreciate that.
I'd just like to say, you know, we did the salary study, and put that in effect last year in October, I guess it showed up in November, and then I, you know, we had what, what the federal government did, I call it the little Trump bump, got a little bit because of changing the income tax. This is a, Brian, I appreciate, we spent some time together on this, in person, face to face, but this is a, it's a big, it's a big number, 1.6 million dollars, and to, for the board commissioners to pass that on to the employees, that would be a tough thing to do, especially after what we've done. So I appreciate the work, I appreciate the work you've done with Jason Smith and Neer, but I just want everybody to know that, that we do this every year, and here we are in March, and this affects next year's budget. Sometimes you vote on things that affects next year's budget, but you don't get dealing with next year's budget. You might be dealing with it now, and we are, and we are working on next year's budget, but it doesn't come full circle until that date in August. But when you vote on this, this is in next year's budget, one way or another, whether it's on top of what you have now, or whether you find other places to take it so that you can pay for it. I just want to remind everybody that that does show up. It doesn't, it may not show up today, it's a vote today, but it will show up starting in July, voted on in August. But you've worked hard on it, and insurance is something we all deal with each and every year. You know where I'm at?
Captain Major Point, the, the amount that this is, for each employee, this, this pays to about $2,000 per year. That's not an increase they see on their weekly, my weekly paycheck, but certainly if they were to be absorbing this, it would be a significant $2,000 a year.
Well.
About 80 a month, I believe.
Yeah.
Or 80 per check average, I'm sorry.
Yeah, depending on the number of employees we have, we discussed it the other day, it's about $76.92.
That's right. The number down.
And so as we were talking about that, talking to department heads, and, you know, it affects some people more than others, and as a commissioner, I told you, I, I get it. I truly get it. And so for our employees, we've got to look out for our employees, and I expect them to work hard and look out for our citizens, and I think we've done a lot of that in the last couple of years. I just, again, I just want to make the board aware that we are voting on something that will come before you on a piece of paper come August. But thank y'all so much.
Great, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize elected official Kim Cobb, who's here, too. Thank you for being here, Kim. That's the inclusion of our regular business and.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I have a question for Lonnie. New Business Item Number Three, we're talking about the quit claim there, the word abandoned caught my eye. Are we legally required to have a formal public hearing on that?
Right there. So now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
We do have the need for executive session to talk about real estate and potential pending litigation. So at this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session. I move, we move to executive session for real estate and potential pending litigation.
Second. Motion of the second, need discussion.
We do have several real estate issues.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned until 2:30.